Welcome, everybody, to our Bloomfield Township Board of Trustees meeting. It's Monday, March the 10th. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you. On the agenda first, we always do our public comment. If there's anything you'd like to discuss other than we do have a public hearing on the truth in taxation and the consideration of the approval of the budget, we'll have public comment at those times also. But if there's anything else you'd like to discuss, you're welcome to come up to the microphone here, introduce yourself, tell us your address, and state your opinion. And we ask you to stay within the three-minute time frame.
Hello. Mic's on?
Mic's on.
My name is Skylar Hamel. I am concerned about the deer in Bloomfield Township. I have been a resident in Bloomfield Village for over 35 years, and I've noticed a substantial increase in the past five years. My concern of the deer is, number one, the auto, tick-borne diseases, and property damage. The first two truly are life-threatening. My suggestion is to cull the deer in the area. They've done it in Metro Park.
We have lost our safety area between the end of the road and Telegraph. We have lost any kind of a sound barrier, any kind of a visual separation between us and what I will call the Indy 500 of Telegraph now, where there are so many cars that are constantly just squealing down there at incredible rates of speed. So, based on the fact that many of us have considered that particular area kind of an oasis and a hamlet, where when we pull off of Telegraph or Orchard Lake Road you walk into or drive into a very peaceful, wonderful spot that you still have access to all sorts of commercial things that you need, that's gone for all of us that live on any of those streets like Edison, Dorchester, Wagner, where there is a dead end, and we now have complete exposure to Telegraph. I am hoping I have communicated with Mr. McCready and also with Cory Almas and Alex, and in the interest of working with the township, to come up with some type of a conclusion and resolution that will be basically putting us back to whole from what we were prior to the devastation that was done in pursuit of that particular project. So it is my hope that we are going to be able to reach some type of a happy resolution for everyone, especially for those of us who live on those dead-end streets and have lived there for a variety of reasons for many, many years, and have found it to be a very wonderful, neighborly, peaceful place to live. That's been taken away from us as a result of that particular safety path. The lighting, the speed of the cars that are going down there, from what I understand, one of our neighbors had a car come right through the fence that is on that southbound part of Telegraph. So I really hope that all of you will find a way to work with us. That's what we would like to do, and I think I can speak on behalf of everyone that lives in that area. We want to find some type of a harmonious solution to taking us back to what I call a place of being whole in view of what has happened with all of the work that was done in that area. Thanks for the time, and hopefully I look forward to a nice, harmonious resolution. Thank you.
Well done.
Hi. I'm Brandy Ryskowski at 1162, right across the street from my, and the path goes right behind my property. And I was looking at the lights that, when they get turned on, they haven't been turned on, but when they do, they will be shining right into my home as they go down, and also with Steve and Cindy Vassar and around the corner. And I guess my concern is, and I am not a public speaker, I think I'm going to faint, why do we need those lights through there? Could it have not been something lower to the ground as far as a safety path? And it's only a short span, but it's a lot of lights. It would be like if I said to you, "How would you like to live by Myers Parking Lot?" That's, once those lights get lit, that's what it's going to be. And I don't think anybody would disagree with me. You wanted to have the lights there, I understand. Actually, I don't understand the whole thing, but this is what I'm addressing, and this is what I was told to address because it goes right behind my home. And also, other people that are here, I don't know if they'll speak, but it's the same thing. And are these lights going to go from dusk to dawn? What are they going to do? They're huge streetlights, lamps, all the way across the back of my property. And what has happened on Telegraph, if you look, you can see right into my home, where we used to have all the vines and the trees and the privacy. We have nothing now, just as my addressed it. So I'm really hoping we can do something with this, because there are a lot of us here that are truly upset. Anyway, thanks for listening.
Good evening, Honorable McCready, Honorable Trustees. My name is Kiefa Jeyusi. I live at 47, now I can't talk, 1147 Edison Avenue. We are very nervous about the project that took place in our community. And we strongly support the staff recommendation for the restoration of what that project did to our community. And we truly appreciate our newly-elected supervisor who listened to us, who visited the site, and he saw the tremendous damage that was basically flipped our community into unsafe, noisy, just, it's like living on the sidewalk of 24 of Telegraph. And I have a granddaughter who can no longer go outside and enjoy half an acre of property in the background, in the backyard. And before I came here, I looked at Clemis, the crime clusters. It is horrific, right across the street from our neighborhood. Our neighborhood has zero crime, zero. And right across Telegraph is nothing but hundreds of crimes, hundreds clusters waiting to jump over Telegraph to come into this community. And no sooner than all of that vegetation and trees came down, we started seeing people at the dead end loitering. And two of them, just one of these days, came and knocked on our door. They wanted to sell windows. I mean, I don't know what happened there. We're not here to point fingers. We're here to work with the township and hopefully complete that project, because it's incomplete right now. The restoration needs to take place as soon as possible. Thank you.
Hello. Thank you for allowing us to be here to speak with all of you and being able to vocalize some concerns that are occurring due to the sidewalk being built. My name is Susan Fritz, and my husband and I own the home at 1078 Dorchester Avenue. Our property borders Telegraph, the full length from Dorchester Avenue to Edison Avenue. Due to the removal of the greenery barrier along our property line, several issues have become apparent that concern us. First issue is that we are now living with our curtains and blinds closed for much of the day and night, due to the back of our home is now so exposed. You can see our whole side and backyard as far back on Telegraph as the on-ramp to Orchard Lake Road. You literally can see us sitting at our dining room table and sitting outside on our back patio. We have absolutely no privacy at all now. Secondly, we no longer can have a conversation out on our back patio due to the noise level has increased exponentially since the greenery barrier has been removed. We find ourselves screaming at each other, so we usually end up going back inside. We no longer can enjoy our outdoor area, unless we want to sit there and text on our phones back and forth to each other. Thirdly, and probably the most problematic issue, is once it gets dark outside, the oncoming traffic lights from the southbound side of Telegraph constantly triggers our motion detector lights on the back of our house. Also, those same car lights shine through our sliding glass door and our kitchen window through to our living room. So if we do not keep the curtains and blinds shut, we have a light show all evening when we're trying to relax and watch TV. Most of the car lights are coming directly from the vastly wide-open space at the section bordering on the on-ramp to southbound Telegraph and the oncoming traffic as it is coming through the underpass of Orchard Lake Road. Furthermore, we also now get the lights from the gas station across Telegraph on the old Telegraph Road ramp. Lastly, the present landscaping that has been completed to date does nothing to create any privacy for us. Our house sits higher on a hill, so the few arborvitae's and bushes that have been planted will take a decade or more before they create any kind of privacy to our home. We are hoping for a further resolution in reducing some of our issues that have been caused by the removal of the greenery barrier. Our wish would be to start at least finding a way to enclose the vast open area along on the ramp with some taller, larger, taller trees that could possibly block most of the car lights and direct view into our backyard. Once again, thank you for your time in allowing us for us to speak with all of you and being able to vocalize our concerns. Thanks.
Hello. I am Cindy Vassar. I live at 1148 Edison, where the property curves right onto the bike path and into the back of our property. The workers have removed all our vegetation coverage, allowing clear view and access to our property. Ours is a unique situation compared to the rest of the subdivision. Months before the project started, a gentleman came through and marked in red the vegetation to be discarded. He assured me only those would be removed. This did not happen. The workers took their equipment and ravaged everything green. My one joy all summer and every summer is to garden my land with a wide array of color and design. My gardens were my private piece of paradise in meditation, and also 60 to 70 hours a week of endless care that it needs. After it was finished last year, I had no privacy. People walking by thought they could speak to me at random, and others blasted profanity in words and what they called music. My safety and solitude is no longer there. My property should not and is not the center for the neighborhood watch. I'm 77. How am I supposed to contend with their unwelcome invasion of privacy? This has been a development, or as I see it, a dismantling of a once-beautiful, secured area. Then there's the lights that have been put in to give even greater access at nightfall. The Bloomfield Township Telegraph corridor has been made as a beautiful passage. Are we really going to stop there? I hope not. Let's carry it all the way through. In closing, please, please, give us back our privacy and security, only, and safety. Only the same thing everyone here wants around their own home, and don't deny nature the aura that thrives in a greenery-covered subdivision. Thank you for your time and utmost consideration to enhance what was once there. And I'm shaking like a leaf.
Hello. My name is Kelly Proctor, and I live across the street from Fred and Sue, and I'm even higher up, so it's over for me. I have a clear view of the gas station, the towers, the wire towers, but my biggest concern is, is I've been walking in my neighborhood for nearly 20 years. I've walked by that patch of woods thousands of times. I've never felt unsafe. I don't have that now. I do not feel safe with everybody, no one were there when nobody knew we were there before. So that's a problem. The security is a problem. And like my said, it was like our own private Idaho. Nobody knew we were there. We'd pull off the street from traffic. It was like up north every day. That's gone. I don't even care to come around the corner and head down to the end of the street. Just, it's completely changed everything for me. And I've been there a long time, paying my mortgage, finally got to a place, finally got to a place where I've paid so much interest that my balance was going to make a difference, my principal was going to make a difference. And yes, it's a tricky place alongside Telegraph there, but when we had that wall, when we had that green wall, it was okay. Somebody would be, "Oh, I can deal with this." But now, I'm sure the property value, and I feel bad for the rest of the neighborhood, and I'm sorry that they're not here, because when I do walk around the neighborhood, the whole neighborhood is louder. It's definitely affecting them, and if one of us did want to leave, we're not going to be able to get what we could before, and that's just going to bring down the quality of people buying in the neighborhood, and that will affect the rest of the neighborhood, and I'm sorry that they're not here. But I just want to stand in solidarity with my neighbors. We've lived together, many of us, for decades without even knowing each other in peace. Unfortunately, we've come together under this, it's a tragedy for me. I mean, maybe that sounds dramatic, but anybody would be, if somebody wasn't depressed by what happened along there, then there would be something wrong with them. And quite frankly, I don't think it's safe to be walking out there with people getting onto Telegraph, going south on Telegraph, picking up the speed up to 50 miles an hour, people merging from the other side of old Telegraph. I don't think it's safe. And thank you.
My name is Steve Vassar. I also live at 1148 Edison. We have some photos of our property that we can pass out to you to see what's actually before and after. I'm not going to go through my entire speech that I laid out originally, but I want to hit a few key points in the aspect of, the only portion of the bike path that is lit is behind Brandy's and our home in the aspect, we're not only, the rear of our property totally exposed during the day, you've lit it, so it's exposed in the night as well. I would appreciate at least the consideration of a limit on the amount of time that that bike path is lit. You know, you guys created a bunch of unintended consequences, and I think you understand that by the amount of people that are here speaking tonight. You know, this was not an act of God, this was not an insect infestation, this was not a fire, this was something you guys approved. One of the things that you did, the communication that went out was so vague on what was going to happen, that no one comes to the outreach and the public hearing. If you would have told us that you were going to take every piece of upright greenery in the right-of-way, we would have been there and speaking loudly then, and that would have been rerouted, because you had another route to go, and you didn't use it. You know, there's a new landscape plan that you guys have already developed somewhat, and it still doesn't address all of the issues that need to be dealt with. We're hoping that you approve some funds to get this taken care of, and the group, many of us will meet Wednesday with the township staff and Hubble, Roth, and Clark. There are other issues that need to be discussed on other issue, at another time, in another place, but we really wish that you would consider our plight that you guys have created and approve some dollars this evening. Thank you very much, and have a good evening.
Okay. Public comment. If there's no other comment, we'll close public comment and move on to our item number two, our Consider Our Consent Agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'd like to remove two items from the consent agenda.
Okay.
The amendment to the budget and payroll and vouchers.
Okay. So payroll and vouchers and the amendment to the fiscal year budget?
Correct.
D and E?
D and E.
Okay. We will move those to, I'm looking, is anybody from PAA here? They're not here yet. So why don't we approve the consent agenda with A, B, and C, if there's a motion?
Support.
Support. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. So we'll do that. And then why don't we go ahead and work on, Mark, you have a question regarding the Consider Approval of the Amendment for the Fiscal Year 2025?
Yes, but we can cover it during the budget item, because the budget item includes all changes.
Okay. You want to include it in number five?
Yeah.
Okay.
There's no reason why we can't, because we have to approve-
Okay.
Both the current year and-
Well, it's a separate motion. It requires a separate action.
Okay.
This is for budget 25, not 26.
Correct. Good point.
The-
So was it okay to do it now?
But you can include both changes in the current year financial budget and the next year's changes, because they're both listed.
Well, I think we'll just need two motions.
We'll just need two motions.
This is for 24, 25. And what we're talking about later is 25, 26.
Right.
So because the changes that we're looking at-
But I guess you're suggesting, because it'll help shorten the timeframe to discuss it, because you have similar questions for both topics.
Correct.
Yeah.
Okay. So we'll deal with it, number five, under the public hearing for the item number, consent item D will move to like 5A when we deal with the public hearing on the approval of the 2026 budget.
Perfect.
Okay. And then, Mark, you have a question on the approval of payroll and vouchers for March 10th, 2025?
Yes. And those could be answered during the budget discussion. So do you want to wait for after the budget discussion for payroll and vouchers?
That's a separate issue. That's a separate issue.
Does it relate to the budget?
Yes, it does, because my position hasn't changed on funding, properly funding public safety through December and January.
Okay. I don't think our position has changed, and I think you said a motion before and the motion failed, didn't you?
Not on that issue.
Okay.
So I don't think, there's not enough in reserves in public safety to meet their payroll requirements through December and January, and there were not enough transfers allocated in the existing budget. So I want to make sure that public safety is covered, and that's why I keep voting no on the payroll and vouchers.
Well, let's talk about it right now, because I don't agree with you. I think we've covered it very well, over and over again. And the budget, as we state, we collect in February, and then we make everything whole and even. I'm not sure how better we can explain it than where we've been to date. We're not changing our way we're doing business. We have a AAA credit rating, and we collect taxes, and this is all part of the budget. So when you vote on the budget for 25, 26, I'll remind you that it's the same practice, and that we're always whole at the end of the year, and that's how most governments, if not all, work.
At the end of the day, either the funds are available or they're not. If the transfers to make payroll have to be met, and they're not, and I have no idea where the funds are coming from. I don't know if they're coming from Water and Sewer, because we haven't been told. I don't know if it's coming from the Capital Improvement Fund, because we haven't been told. And if it is coming from the General Fund, I don't have an issue with that, but I do think that we should be observant of those KPIs, those key performance indicators. And I do want to make sure that if things go south unexpectedly, like they did during COVID, that enough funds are there. And I think there's nothing wrong with following that best practice. Now, we don't have to agree on, and with respect to the end of the year, I realize that those do balance, but in December and January, it's clear the funds aren't there. It's clear that in the quarterly report, they aren't there. And it's okay if we understand how it's being funded through the leanest part of the year, tax-wise. I see no problem with that, and I think it's important to let public safety know that we have their backs covered.
I think you're-
We've answered the question multiple times.
Yeah. I think you're trying to-
It's like you're creating an issue that's not there. It doesn't exist. The General Fund provides sufficient liquidity to cover the Public Safety Fund during the valley that occurs in November and December while we collect our taxes. I have no evidence in the quarterly report showing-
Well, you were able to do the math to show that there was a $12 million deficit in the Public Safety Fund based on its beginning fund balance. You could do the same math for the General Fund to show that there's a $20 million surplus. And that $20 million is more than sufficient to cover the $12 million of public safety.
And was it appropriated? Was the transfer appropriated to meet that obligation in December?
The transfer's out budget, covers transfers, and will be booked before the end of the budget year.
And is, just to make a point of clarification with the township attorney, can transfers be returned after taxes come in?
Transfers can be approved as part of budgets. You've asked the same question, and I haven't been at every single meeting, but you've asked the question every time we've talked about the budget. It's been answered numerous times. I don't know how, a different way that-
I think the question is, can we transfer money out of the General Fund into the Public Safety Fund?
Yes.
And then transfer it back when we decide that it was too much?
I think you could.
Or, once we send it to the Public Safety Fund, isn't it designated Public Safety Fund money that we have to use for that?
I think you can transfer it back in the same budget year. Yeah?
And so all I'm saying is, it's good to understand how much liquidity is actually needed to fund public safety, because it'll impact future decisions.
It's one thing to say it's good to understand. It's another thing to keep asking the same question at every single meeting and getting an answer that you don't like. And I don't know, I don't know how we can answer it in a different way that will answer the question to your satisfaction. I guess that's the best way I can say it. I think you've made your objection, or your point, whichever one of the two it is, and I think it'd be appropriate for somebody to make a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion that we approve payroll and vouchers. Support.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Okay. Six to one. Okay. Thank you. All right. Is anybody, Public Affairs is our lobbyist that we're looking at here. They're not here yet, so I'm going to hold off on item number three, and they're going to be here to do a presentation for us. And why don't we move to item number four, the public hearing, truth and taxation discussion, presented by Darren Kratz, our township assessor. Welcome, Darren.
Hello. Thank you for your time tonight. This is my one-year presentation that gives everybody glazed eyes, because nobody can understand what I'm talking about. But basically, for the truth in taxation, we are going to levy more in tax revenue this coming year than we did the past year. So with that, it means that we're going to have headly rollbacks again. I don't know exactly what that's going to be. We get that information from the county sometime early April. But I went ahead and did an estimate on these two for you, the two handouts I provided tonight. The one thing I did want to point out, my numbers versus what Jason has in the budget, Jason has to prepare the budget, I don't know, maybe a month or so ago, so he's been working- The one thing I did want to point out, my numbers versus what Jason has in the budget, Jason has to prepare the budget, I don't know, maybe a month or so ago, so he's been working on that. We didn't just finalize the, the numbers until maybe two weeks ago. Yeah, maybe three weeks ago, but our numbers are a little bit more up to date than Jason's are. So that's why you're going to recognize my number at $5.4 billion, and Jason, I think, was 3.539. So he, he got, he gets preliminary numbers from us, which is where he has to do his budget, so you can have it done and ready in time for, for the presentation tonight. Mine's, mine was as of 3/5, so just a couple days ago. But you can see from my, one of my handouts here, the, the one that's not highlighted, the difference in tax revenue between 24 and 25 with the updated millage reduction on the 25 tax year, so. That's it.
Okay, thank you.
Any questions or anything, or?
Any questions, or we'll open up for public comment? If anybody in the audience would like to make a comment on item number four, truth and taxation discussion, now's your chance. If not, we'll close public discussion and open it up for any other questions from the board or Darren or comments. No? Okay, all right. I don't think we need a motion on that, do we, or?
We do not.
We do not, okay. Item number five, public hearing, consider approval of the 2025, 26 fiscal year budget presented by our finance director, Jason Teis. Jason, welcome.
Thank you. So to clarify, are we doing that and then coming back to the amendment on?
Yes.
Okay. So, no presentation, not a lot has changed since the study session or, or budget discussion we had, I think a month ago now. There, at that time, I did mention that by the time the assessor gets the numbers in, those, we might get a little bit more increase in the property taxes, which did happen, so property taxes overall went up a couple hundred thousand. Now, you won't see that all in one area because then that gets split by where the millages are, so public safety saw the biggest piece of that increase. Another item that was new is the, you've referenced it a few times, the, the PAA, we put money in to budget for that if, if that was approved tonight. We also, the other item I'll mention is we added money in the fire department section of the public safety fund to start doing, hiring a company to do the next step of getting towards a new fire station, or replacing the old fire station. Which is getting it basically shovel-ready, so the architecture and the plans and all that is, is that next step, and that would get us closer to also possibly getting funding from an outside source, a grant, federal money, state money. Other than that, pretty much everything stayed the same as, as what was discussed last time I was before the board.
Thank you, Jason. If there's, we'll open it up for public comment. If there's anybody here that would like to speak upon the budget as presented, now's your chance to come up to the microphone and talk to us, let's hear your thoughts. If not, I'll close public comment and open up questions of the board for Jason. Anybody have any questions for Jason on the budget as been presented?
No questions other than that, as you stated, everything was presented previously. We had a discussion on this.
We had a full, very, at length discussion on this, and so I have no further questions.
I, I have a question regarding investment income. Will Water and Sewer be allowed to retain its investment income?
Yes, it's going into the general fund, and it varies every year. And if, do you have a number of exactly how much that is, Mark?
No, I don't, because the details haven't been broken out in the quarterly reports.
Okay. So it's the interest from the Water and Sewer Fund that's going into the general fund that you're looking for that number?
Correct. For the current year, the current year, we can discuss that later, but also for next year. I think those should be, follow the, the purpose of the assets, which is to fund Water and Sewer.
Sure. And Jason, under Water and Sewer, we have a separate fund we keep for Water and Sewer. It's kept separately. But we do, when it's in the bank, we earn interest, or we invest that money for interest, right? Right, Michael?
That's correct. All of the investments are pooled for the sake of scale efficiencies. To break out how much interest belongs to any particular capital would be a cumbersome task because you'd have to look at what would, interest rates fluctuate daily, and cash balances fluctuate daily. Within the, within the funds, the water fund, for example, versus, you know, collects more during the summer, less during the winter. The general fund collects, and the public safety fund collects it based on when the taxes are collected. So it's, it's a more complicated task than just saying, okay, X percent, you know, because the cash balances are different depending on when you look at them. It's really, you know, we're in, in compliance, and I think that the reason, you know, that the legislature said in the statute that the interest should go into the general fund is, is, I think, two reasons. One is because it simplifies the accounting of it because, as I said, it gets more complicated based on time of year, interest rates fluctuating, et cetera. And also because of the flexibility that the general fund provides. So if there's a decision by this board to transfer money from the general fund to the Water and Sewer Fund, we can pick a number because the, the general fund allows us to transfer money to any fund. That's the point of the general fund. So we could pick a number and allocate that money and move it to the, to the Water and Sewer Fund and call it interest without, you know, going through the, the effort of, you know, coming up with a precise number that, you know, can be, you can calculate it a number of different ways. So I would look to the board, I, in terms of the answer to Mark's question, this budget conforms to the way that we've always handled the interest, which is all of the interest goes into the general fund. If this board wants to modify that, now would be the time to do that. We could modify this budget, we could take the money out of the general fund, and we could move it into the Water and Sewer Fund or wherever we want to put it. Keeping in mind that if we moved, you know, whatever amount of money out of the general fund, then that's going to affect this budget. We need to make sure that we pass a balanced budget, so. And if, if the amount of money that's going to come out of it puts the general fund in a deficit situation, then we're going to need to cut something. So, you know, if anyone wants to make a proposal as to how much money should be moved, now would be the time to do it. And the board can discuss and debate and make a decision as to whether or not that money would get moved. And what, if anything, would have to come out of the budget to accommodate that.
Michael, do we have a ballpark idea of what, what volume are we talking about? How much money are we talking about?
So-
I know it will vary, but-
Yeah, I mean, it, it, it varies, you know, at its peak, I invest about $100 million of township cash. At its peak, the Water and Sewer Fund is between 18 and 20 million. At its trough, it's down to 13 or 14 million, and we're down to 60 million or 70 million in cash, based on the time of year. So, again, in terms of what time of year that was, what the interest rates are going to be, you know, what they were. I, I don't have a, a detailed record of what interest rates were on any given day.
Yeah, that's, that's kind of what I was talking about, not how much-
Oh, okay, you're talking about the interest rates?
Like, are we talking about $50,000, $500,000, but that's also going to vary a lot because-
Yeah, it's going to depend on, it depends on what the rates were and what, what balance and ratio of the balance you're looking at. So if you say, you know, if you look at, we earned about 4 million minus, we're going to be at a, a little over 1, 2.2 to 2.6 million in interest this year.
But that's across all vehicles.
On the total, across everything, right? So-
Carve out-
Pick a number, 10 to 20 percent, you want to call that? You know?
So you're talking 200, 300,000?
You're talking about a couple hundred thousand dollars, maybe 400,000 dollars?
But it's hard because the Water and Sewer fluctuates during the year, like you said.
Everything does.
And then, and then the trough.
Yeah, I mean, everything, the general fund and, and the, and the public safety fund and the road fund, I mean, they all fluctuate based on when the tax collections are. And the Water and Sewer is based on when the water collections are, so.
And a few years ago, the interest rates were 0.1%.
Right, interest, interest rates were far less before than they are now. Could they, you know, and originally, when we sat down to first do this budget, we projected that interest was going to go down in the 26 year because we expected interest rates to come down. We thought there was going to be, you know, or at least I thought there was going to be several interest rate cuts by the Federal Reserve at this point. That hasn't happened. You know, at this point, there's, if you believe Wall Street, 100% possibility that there's going to be a rate cut in May or June. May happen, may not happen, who knows? There may be more cuts, who knows?
It just seems to me that, I mean, the state law specifically provides that the, that the interest can be maintained in the, in the general fund. You've already stated why. I think that makes perfect sense. Gives the, the board and the community the most flexibility for the funding, and, you know, I don't see any reason to change it.
Right, and so that's my point, is that, once we say that it's in the general fund according to, to state law, we can move whatever we want. You want to move 200,000, you want to move 500,000, 1 million, you can move whatever, I mean, this board can do whatever it wants in terms of moving general fund money to Water and Sewer, you know, and but that's a policy discussion and decision, and whatever decision we come to, if we're going to move money, it's going to affect the budget that's presented here. And if, if, if we don't have, it may, it may, it may involve cuts from this budget. That's all I'm saying.
So my, my suggestion potentially is that we, I mean, the Water and Sewer is a separate fund, an enterprise fund. We're actually not even talking about that in tonight's budget. It'll be ultimately discussed in another meeting in a few, few weeks. I think it's two meetings away. But maybe we talk about that at that time, and if we, if the board decides to change its policy concerning how the interest is used, we can make an amendment to the budget then. But it's kind of premature even to talk about how, whether or not the Water and Sewer rates and, and accounts will have interest in it or won't.
Well, I think if we look at what Birmingham does, Birmingham generated in the, their financial year ending in 2024, over $500,000 of investment income for Water and Sewer. Troy generated over 300,000, and their fund reserves were about $14 million, so significantly less. In both cases, it's about 1.5% to 2% of the expenses for Water and Sewer over the last two years. So it's a lot of money, and it can go a long way to covering the increases that we're seeing in the news that we're going to get in water rates for the purchase of water. So if the township board doesn't want to do anything, just be clear about it and be clear what's going into the general fund.
Well, Kenny, if you don't mind, getting back to what Martin just stated, that, just what you just said was a philosophical discussion for Water and Sewer rates, has nothing to do with this budget.
Actually, actually it does because it reduces the amount of revenue for the general fund.
Well, you're talking about budgets for the Water and Sewer rates, bringing the water rates down, and if you want to have that discussion in a couple of weeks, that's fine.
No, what I'm talking about is reducing the amount that's being, going into the general fund and applying it to Water and Sewer. That means there's less money going into the general fund, and that impacts the general fund as Mr. Shostak stated.
Okay.
And either, either we can run it without, there is no requirement to put it in. I think it's unethical to do it, but it's not illegal.
It's completely legal. It's not unethical, any way it should perform. It's completely legal and completely appropriate.
There is a requirement-
And if you have a different policy position, I think that's fine, but to besmirch the representation of the, of the hardworking people that have been, been working here on behalf of this, of the residents of this township with a statement like that is callous, unfair.
I, I don't think it-
I get that you disagree. It should be, you want to handle differently.
The board approves it, not the employees.
What's that, Mark?
The board approves it, not the employees.
Then I therefore include the board. In, in many decades of board members who have sat here and, and worked on behalf of the residents of the township. It's a policy decision, and, and they, they can make a different one without making it some sort of ethical problem, and it's completely legal.
And I like what Martin has said. If we decide to do that, that is a great discussion for the Water and Sewer rates in two weeks. We can make a budget amendment at that time. If you would like to make a motion now to do that, feel free, and we'll see if we can get you the vote. But I agree with Clerk Brooke here on waiting for that discussion. At the time, we know the water rates, we know what's going to be impactful and what the budget is. I think it'd be callous for us to do it now. But please, if you'd like to make a motion on it, we can make the amendment now for the revenue, and then I would please, if you make that motion, what do you want to cut out of the general fund to offset that dollar amount? I would like to know that before I vote.
Well, I would think we could always do a budget amendment at the time we're discussing water if we decided to go that way. The other thing is, you know, everybody's different. People say, why is our water more expensive? We're not in the same contract as, say, Royal Oak. We're not, by the way, they don't get the, the app that we do. They can't, my son can't see his water daily like ours. But anyways, different water system. But like West Bloomfield, their water rates are lower, but they're using some of their general fund money, as I understand it, to lower that rate artificially to try and keep the water rate lower, even though it's not the water revenue doing it. It's all budgetary decisions, and it's, it's all out in the open, and, and I agree that we need to move on and have this discussion at water.
Yeah, and Jason, you're familiar with the Water and Sewer Fund and the general fund and billing. Are you familiar with the billing, water billing that we pass out to residents in our businesses?
I mean, to a certain, from a financial aspect, yeah.
And let's say we took $300,000 of interest out of the general fund and put it towards the Water and Sewer Fund and took it off a resident's bill. What's, what average would we be taking off the average bill, household bill, would you estimate?
That I, I couldn't calculate right here. We can, though. I mean, it, we have a model that, that we use to get to rates, back into rates, based on what revenue you have and what expenses you need to cover. So I, I can't give you a number, but, I mean, you have 15,000-some parcels that, that get a bill, so that's where we would start, is, is dividing it out across that way, but.
I just did it by 17,000. That's what came to mind, 17,000 residents, and it's $17.64. Just simple math, not accurate.
Okay, and that the interest rate, it fluctuates depending on what we can earn, and lately, the last few years, obviously, it's a higher interest rate than what it had been in past years when we were at very low interest rate. So now gathers a little bit more interest. So I would like to, we can address this, Mark, at the Water and Sewer, but if you'd like to make a motion now, we're more than welcome to entertain it.
No, I'll make the motion when we do the transfer for the for 2025 for the capital improvement fund.
Okay.
I have a couple of simple questions before we move forward. So, and I've been trying to do some homework on the side here, but I'm assuming, just in case anybody, it jumps out at them like it did at me, like the household hazardous waste, we had amended and put 150,000 in there, and then we didn't end up having the third event, and my understanding is Mike doesn't want to have a third event this year, so that's why that dropped right back down.
Yeah, so the two, it'll be the two events that are covered by the priority waste contract, yeah.
Completely by priority, so it's not in our budget.
No, and Bill, I use that money because we're hiring, looking to hire a PR director, so I wanted to use that money for that.
No, I, I totally agree with you. I saw the 155, and I wanted to know why, why was there a-
I'm getting my, my box.
That's okay.
Yeah, sorry.
But I saw, I thought, what is that, why is that 155?
Right.
And then it goes back down. Similarly, the open house went from 34 to 32 to 40, and then it's up to 45 for next year. And I guess, just a personal opinion, that it's a great event, but we have other things to spend the money on, and I guess I would rather have that go back down to a 40. This is, I, you know, I don't, I don't make the, the policy, I just vote.
Yeah, but Jason, why did we build that back up?
So why did that go up?
Do you, you recall?
Well, the, the previous columns you're looking at, one of them would have been the actual for 24. So we, we've been budgeting 35 to 40 a year, and then trying to see with, with the changes that have been made, we've made additions to what's being provided there and We've made additions to, uh, what's being provided there and, um, different types of food and all that. So just based on looking how the last couple of years went, and then knowing that there's inflation, price increases, stuff like that. And, and there may be some requests to add, you know, something new, I, I increase a little bit, but.
Okay, yeah, I just noticed that went up, and I, I guess I would rather us keep it down.
So there was really nothing added to the amount?
No, yeah, nothing specific.
Protecting case of increase of cost.
Just making sure there's enough to cover it.
Just a budgeting measure, okay, thank you, that's all I have.
Okay, any other questions?
Just a comment, similar to what, um, Trustee Neil had talked about. I had made a lot, we've done a lot of our homework previous to this meeting, made a lot of calls to different department heads. And everybody was very, um, open with everything we asked, whether it was an increase or decrease. And I really appreciate you taking the time to go through the budget with us and put this online, so thank you again, Jason.
Yeah, nice work. Thank you.
Jason, I just want to clarify that when the board makes the motion to approve the budget, not only will they be approving the budget, but they'll be approving the proposed millage rates too, correct?
I don't, I don't think that, that, I don't think so. Because I, I thought, and Assessor isn't here, but I, those millage rates don't actually get finalized till September. Before the, the winter tax bill, so.
Wasn't clear, I just wanted to confirm.
We estimate what we think they're going to be, and that was kind of his, his discussion and his attachment, based on taxable value, yeah.
Yeah, and it wasn't in the packet at all, so.
Yeah, I didn't see it, that was the reason I asked the question.
I think we've started addressing it in the fall when the tax bills go out.
Very good, thanks.
Okay, so make a motion to approve.
I do have questions about the central services fees. What expenses do those cover?
That's, it's a long, uh, question. I'll, I'll try and answer in summary. Central service fees are, are provided by a cost allocation consultant. They do the work every two years. They started, I think, in twenty nineteen, twenty eighteen.
I, I just want to know when they do the cost.
I'm, I'm getting there if you can let me finish, please. So what they do is they look at the departments in, uh, the, mainly the general fund that provides services to the other funds. Services that if they didn't exist and weren't provided, that they, those departments would have to hire a, a company, a consultant, they'd have to, or, or hire their own employees to do that work. So, um, something like accounting is, we exist doing all of the work for all of the other departments that are providing services. Police fire, um, treasuries collecting the, the tax bills, assessings doing the work. All of those, those are probably the best examples, um, but there's, there's a multitude of departments that fall into that. And again, that's something we don't calculate it, we don't determine it. It's, it's done by the professionals, and then they provide us with the report.
Well, I, I find it odd that they're all round numbers. They all change by thousands of dollars. And there's no account that balances out what was paid in. So, um, even if they said we want to cover X expenses, why don't we have an account showing what's going in, what's going out, and what's left from those central services fees? And why aren't funds being returned at the end of the year? It's always a round number.
I, I don't follow what you're.
So, uh, so let's see. Six hundred and eighty-five thousand for road. Three million eight hundred and eighty-five thousand for public safety, four hundred and fifteen thousand. They're all rounded off to the nearest five thousand dollar figure, which seems odd if you're use, applying it to meet certain expense obligations. That's number one. Number two, I find it odd that it's more than the dollar value of our allocated general fund millage, that's a lot of money. So that's why I'm trying to understand what expenses are actually covered by that. And for example, um, if water and sewer is paying treasury to invest income, and they don't keep their investment income, why would that be appropriate? That, to me, doesn't make sense. Or if building inspection, which is also an enterprise fund, if they're paying a fee out, uh, the three hundred and five thousand this year, and part of that is investing income, then why aren't they also retaining their interest income? So that's why I'm asking the question, especially related to the enterprise funds, because why is that fee there? So, um, and if there's no fact basis, uh, to support those fees, there's no dollar value, this is what we're allocating it towards, how can we actually, uh, commit those fees to water and sewer? Now, things like the audit, I would expect to be part of it. And I would expect water and sewer to pay a share for that. But again, uh, without knowing what those, what we're actually paying into from water and sewer, I have no idea. There's no report, no calculations online. The information is not provided to the public. So that's why I'm asking the question.
Uh, and you emailed me and requested a copy of that report earlier today, and I did send that off to you. It's a hundred and eighty-one page document.
Okay, I, I haven't seen it, I've been working all day, so I haven't had a chance to read, read it or review it.
Okay, thank you, Jason.
I've got one other question regarding, um, benefit payments for the OPEB liability. And I'm going to read something from the approved, from the actuary reports that, uh, that, uh, and the, the actuarial determinant contributions. And what it says is the township contributes one point two five million in excess of the benefit payments in accordance with the funding policy each year. Now, we have water and sewer, OPEB is fully funded. So, and typically in a fully funded situation, a government entity would not be paying money in. But that's been required for the la-
Two thousand and fifteen.
That's required for building inspection. They're two hundred percent funded, they're still paying in. Cable studio is a hundred and seventy percent funded, they're still paying in. So to me, that doesn't make sense because they're fully funded, those subaccounts. And that would mean that there has to, somewhere else the money would have to come from to make those variations up. And, um, uh, the two funds that are underfunded are the general fund and public safety. So.
For the OPEB, for the OPEB benefit.
For the OPEB, yeah. So again.
Didn't we address this at a previous meeting?
Yes, and my question wasn't answered.
Your question was answered. I told you that there were no contributions from those funds into the OPEB trust, other than public safety and general.
And I did send a note regarding page ninety-two of the audit and the schedule, and there are benefit payments listed on that. The GASB disclosure also shows benefit payments, and I'm trying to match up those numbers back and forth. The GASB reports for water and sewer showed that not only were contributions made, but also for, for benefit payouts, whether it's pay-as-you-go or not, doesn't matter. It's still considered a benefit. So why would that language be in these documents? And why would that language be in the corrective action plan that was submitted to the state of Michigan?
Jason, correct me if I'm mistaken, but that page ninety-two marks referencing, that's from UHI in their, um, report back to us, and it's very general, isn't it? It's not as specific as our reports would be.
That is prepared by our auditors at UHI. I have the utmost confidence that it's been prepared correctly, um, so.
But it's just not as detailed a report as, say, your reports would show the breakdown of what Mark's referring to.
Right, it's showing it at a, at a trust level, which is, is the, the appropriate way to do it. We have chosen from many years ago to try and track those assets on a subaccount basis. But still, when you look at the trust and you prepare these schedules and you determine your funding levels, it's all done at a trust level.
Right.
Which is no different than how the pension is done.
So are the four million three hundred and fifty-eight thousand, four hundred and eighty-nine benefit payments and refunds that are listed on that schedule, those never happened?
I don't think anyone said that.
Yeah.
Yes, because it's tied back to either, if the money is paid out, it's tied to the budget. Whether it's this year, this, for last year or for this year, it would still be tied to the budget.
Mark, I think what you're doing is you're referencing a report from UHI, which is more of a general overview of what we do. And then you're looking at, I think, Jason's work and trying to tie the two together, is that, is that?
That is correct.
Okay, so I don't, I don't know if we can tie those two together. Could we ask UHI to be more specific when they do their audit, to break it down like that?
No, that, that, they're preparing it in accordance with what GASB says, how it should be prepared.
Right, accounting structure, right.
So on.
We're supposed to be discussing the twenty twenty-six budget, aren't we?
Right.
Yes, I am. I'm asking about the benefit payouts that are going to OPEB.
Right, and the, and the benefit.
From last year, or, and years before, I mean.
I'm referencing that as the benefits that are going out, and I'm asking, what are we scheduling for this year?
Good question, what?
So what are we scheduling for this year?
The OPEB payment you said are in February, what's our February OPEB payment?
It was, uh, it occurred a couple of weeks, or a few weeks ago now, uh, one point two five mil, one million out of public safety, two hundred and fifty thousand out of the general fund, and fifty thousand out of the water and sewer fund.
So every other fund that Mark mentioned is already whole, we're not, they're not participating or paying.
No, they haven't made contributions since, I think, twenty eighteen.
What about benefit payments? Those are listed in the GASB disclosures.
Benefit payments.
Benefit as a current benefit payment?
Benefit payments are, mean, ongoing, your monthly benefit payments to your, your healthcare provider, which is.
For your current employees, right?
And retirees.
And retirees.
And those come out of their budgets.
Correct.
So that, that should come out of the cable.
Yeah, but we show it in every line item. If you look at every budget on an account, let, let's take cable, at cable and, what is it here, communications and Kerry's budget. It shows any retirees that are in that budget and what it costs us, as well as active employees, but it highlights the retiree.
Yes, and that's appropriate.
That is very appropriate. But UHI, in their, in their overview, doesn't get into that depth of detail.
No, they don't, but it is in the GASB disclosures, and they consolidate the GASB disclosures going in. But the main question is, is if a subaccount is fully funded, should they be paying in?
Well, they're not, but they're not paying in, Mark, and we've discussed this over and over again. And Jason, as our finance director, has indicated it, right?
That it's being paid in.
And is that page ninety-two from the UHI?
That's page ninety-two.
From the UHI report.
From the UHI report, and.
Which we've discussed, discussed and disclosed, it doesn't get into that finite detail.
The finite detail will be coming available in two years again in the Milliman reports because it's consistent with what's in the Milliman reports, so.
I think what, what, I think to hopefully conclude this, we, we've discussed this before, that what's, what's recorded as, uh, what trustee and Tocley is looking at, does not translate or equate, nor should it, nor is it meant to translate or equal actual cash contributions of new money going into the OPEB trust.
What about money to pay obligations from the OPEB trust?
I think we've answered it over and over again, Mark.
No, you have not answered that.
Yes, we have, you just don't accept the answer.
You might not be satisfied with the answer.
You're not satisfied with the answer, we don't have another better.
I'd like to make a motion that we, uh, that we approve the budget as it's presented this evening.
Support. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Okay, six to one. And then let's deal with, Mark, you wanted to pull out item number D out of the consent agenda, consider approval amendment for the fiscal year twenty twenty-five.
Uh, yes, uh, so based on the previous discussions on, um, investment income to water and sewer. Uh, trustee, or treasurer Shostak mentioned that we could reference a number. So, uh, how about fifteen percent of the investment income for the current year being paid back to water and sewer?
Well, let's look at that, Mark. If we, if we took out three hundred thousand dollars, is that the number fifteen percent you're thinking about?
Fifteen percent of what?
Fifteen percent.
Fifteen percent of your investment income in the.
General fund, so let's say it's three hundred thousand dollars. And let's say we took it off the seventeen thousand homes that Val figured out, it's seventeen dollars, okay? This, these bills are reoccurring every year. And every year, we're seeing approximately two and a half to four percent increase from our, our Detroit Water and Sewer Authority, which is also known as GLA, Great Lakes Water Authority. And, and then every year, we'd have to cover that three hundred thousand dollars, right? Because it's only increasing. So we have to cover this year the increase and put in the three hundred thousand. Next year, we have to cover that three hundred thousand, and the following, all the consecutive years, right? Right? Now, let's say interest rates start to drop. Now we're out the money, and we're just pulling it, our general fund money now, from other accounts to have to cover the water and sewer fund, right?
No, you would be using the funds that were allocated for the benefit of water and sewer. And you were taking that interest income and investment income, and.
If it were to maintain at the same level, right?
If it, well, that's why, uh, even if it goes up and down, it's, just would be appropriate, especially with increased rates. So when you have, you talk about water rates going up.
Yep.
So you're talking about nine million in expenses. So three hundred thousand on nine million expenses is a nice portion of change. And that, that on an annual basis would cover a cost increase.
Mark, it would, I, I did the quick math, seventeen dollars, say, say round numbers, eighteen dollars, say I was, I was low. That's like a dollar and a half per month on your water when we go monthly billing. Is that worth all? I mean, if it was going to be significant, and it was the right thing to do, and it would help ease people's water bills. But I don't think changing all of this for a dollar fifty a month, maybe, and that's if interest rates fall, maybe it's seventy-five cents a month. I don't think that's really what the residents are going to get excited about.
I'd like to just jump in here. So the amendment put forward by our finance director is to amend the current year budget to add two million dollars to the transfers out activity.
Correct.
Okay, and that's it.
Right.
Okay, so where it gets transferred to is a discussion at a later date.
And we discussed this at the last meeting.
Okay, right, but, but all we're doing is adding the ability to transfer an additional two million dollars because as he says in the memo, we are expecting to be under budget. There's going to be some additional investment income that was unexpected, okay? We just happen to have somebody who's really good at investing.
Yes, we do.
Thank you, Michael.
Just kidding, just kidding, just kidding.
But right, I think that point was taken, this is, we're just talking now because the budget.
The point is, is that we're amending the budget to add for two million dollars that we could transfer out at a later date.
Right, right.
Okay, and then the discussion of where it gets transferred to is a later discussion. So I don't want to, I'm not trying to put, I'm not trying to pass judgment on any of these discussions, but where it gets transferred to is a discussion for a later date. All we're doing is approving the ability to transfer two million dollars at a later date.
This is additional money that we ended up with.
Correct, so we're adding two million dollars to revenue and two million dollars to transfers out, that's it.
Managing the budget so tightly and well.
That's it.
And I, I'd like to make a motion that we approve that.
Support, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Aye.
I'm saying I'm agreeing with the transfers out.
Seven to nothing, thank you, Mark. Seven to nothing, okay. Thank you. Item number six, presentation of grant information relating to the new command vehicle, presented by Captain Dan Brown.
I'll make this short and sweet. I'm here on behalf of the Township Police Department, Chief Gallagher was unavailable. Around this time last year, former supervisor Danny Walsh reached out to the state representative, Stephanie Steckloff. They opened up their appropriations, uh, the funding, and she requested, um, after talking with the police department, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for a police mobile command vehicle. Something we've never had here in the township, something that we could abuse many times, at least in my twenty-three year career. That money, along with fifty thousand dollars for the fire department, was approved. Today, I'm, I'm seeking board approval to utilize that grant money. It's fully reimbursable, we'll purchase the items, submit receipts to the state, and get reimbursed. Included in that money will be the actual vehicle, the inside and outside outfitting, radios, telephones, a drone, which we had budgeted for, but now we can use the state money rather than our own money. So this is good for everybody. The police department will certainly use it on the big scenes and to help out the fire department when necessary. So I'm just looking for your approval to utilize this money that was appropriated for us.
That's wonderful, and thank our representative Samantha Steckloff.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I was going to say Samantha.
Did I say Stephanie?
Yeah.
I, I'm sorry.
We appreciate the support, and this is wonderful. Any questions for Captain Brown? We appreciate the support, and this is wonderful. Any questions for Captain Brown?
No, just appreciate that, that Sam Steckloff helped us out here and that would be awesome.
Yes, yes, it's gonna be great.
I would make a motion, we approve it.
Support.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you.
All right, pass it. Opposed? Okay, wonderful. Yeah, congratulations. Okay. Item number seven, consider authorization of tree planting at the vicinity of new safety path at Telegraph presented by Cory Almas, our Director of Engineering Environmental Services. Welcome Cory.
Good evening, board. Thank you. I do have a, a quick presentation here. Excuse me. Uh, here to present, uh, some landscape and vegetative, vegetative screening improvements along the Janner and Sully safety path on Telegraph Road. Uh, the 2024 Safety Path Program approved, uh, this route on February, the board approved this route on February thirteen, twenty twenty-three, uh, on the south side or a southbound side of Telegraph Road from Humphrey to the Clinton River Trail. Uh, the project began in August of twenty twenty-four, and as you can see in the photo, the trees, shrubs and other screening vegetation, uh, as well as the invasive oriental bittersweet vines, uh, were removed along the M dot right-of-way and the fence line there. Uh, ESD received several concerns, complaints from residents regarding this loss of screening. Uh, replacement landscaping was installed in October of twenty-four, twenty twenty-four, and shortly thereafter DT came through and did some, uh, clearing, tree clearing of their power lines that run, uh, above the M dot fence line. Um, supervise, the supervisor's office in ESD received additional concerns from the residents about the screening loss. And we held a meeting in February of twenty twenty-five, and HRC developed a new landscape plan to fill the gaps in, um, of the original landscape using additional evergreen trees and shrubs. Uh, ESD proposes to use seventy-seven thousand dollars from the Woodlands Trust Fund to install the majority of the new plants in May of twenty twenty-five, uh, if the board approves. And, uh, if necessary, additional plants may be installed next year partially with grant funding. Uh, we've got some photos of, uh, some of the areas we want to, where we're proposing to plant, uh, additional vegetation. You can see in that red area, uh, the box area there, and there's five locations throughout the, uh, the Telegraph Road portion. Uh, you can see in this photo, I don't know if there's a laser pointer here, but you can see some of the, the clearing that was done, um, by DT of the trees, uh, just above, uh, that fence line there. Here's an existing photo, uh, before and after. Uh, on the left is the before photo. You can see all the, uh, the, the trees along that area and the aftermath on the right side. Uh, again, here's a good, uh, before. Now, what we're seeing here, uh, is, uh, what we call scrub trees or, uh, and, and a lot of ivy. Now, they're not very aesthetically pleasing trees. They're, just grow there naturally, um, but they do provide that sound, sound barrier between Telegraph Road. So to take a lot of that out, uh, will certainly cause, uh, some noise, added noise pollution to the, the neighboring residents. Uh, here is what's been recently planted, and then again, you can see, uh, this was taken, I believe, before DT came through uh, and cleared out some of those trees on the left, um, along the fence line, and there's what's after. Now, some of this, uh, these trees will grow back or the, the leaves will come back in the, in the spring. Uh, but right now it's just clear that, uh, a lot of that's been wiped out, uh, by this construction. Here's a telltale sign again of, of what was there prior to the project, and again, uh, what's there after. So what we're proposing is, uh, our recommendation was the, what the board moved to approve the allocation of seventy-seven thousand dollars from the Woodlands Trust Fund for the purpose of installing additional plantings and vegetative screening along the, uh, twenty twenty-four Janner and Sully, uh, Telegraph to Clinton River Trail, uh, connector safety path. Uh, with that, I'll open the, to any questions.
I have some questions.
Yes, sir.
What are the heights of the, and the type of trees?
So, yeah, what, what we're proposing Neil is, uh, because we're within the DT, DT right-of-way, there are, uh, species and elevation restrictions. So what, uh, HRC has come up with was, would be a, um, a, a giant planting, uh, what do we've got here?
Green giant.
Thirty-nine green giant arborvitae's in, in different areas, uh, through there, as well as, uh, twenty-seven hix u, uh, it's a narrow growing shrub tree, and that would create a, uh, a decent buffer between, uh, along the fence line and between Telegraph Road. I don't know that it's gonna duplicate what was there, uh, originally, uh, and immediately, but over time it'll, it'll grow back.
What will be the height when they're planted?
The, uh, I think the, I'm not.
I think one of them said six to eight.
Yeah, that what's gonna be planted is proposed sixty-eight feet.
Hix u's thirty-six to forty inches.
Eight, uh, six to eight feet, but they grow to roughly twenty feet.
I know they grow, yeah, to that, but, um, so how much more would it cost to plant something, so once they're planted, at least immediately, they're twelve feet?
Phew, uh, I, I don't know. I can't.
We could talk about funding issues later, but I would like to know how much more it would cost.
Well, I.
I, I, I know one of the gentlemen who lives there was in, in the groundskeeping business for clubs. So is it all right if he interjects a little bit here? Would you come up to the microphone, sir, and introduce yourself?
I did, the rea, let me just finish, please. Uh, because the reason is, when with the, for example, with the Oakland Hills buildings that are going up and the, uh, the greenhouse, not the greenhouse, but the maintenance building on Maple, we required fourteen feet, because it was such, such a eyesore and it was so tall. And, uh, I'm not expecting that we're gonna be able to pay that amount of money, but that's coming out of private funds for Oakland Hills. But for this, I think we do owe it to the homeowners to do as much as we can afford, even if it, if there's some way we can take additional funds out of the maintenance fund for the safety paths or look at some creative ways, because, um, that's just, they're gonna have to live with that for a long time until it really develops and grows, yeah.
Well, I know I drove by it because Mike had mentioned this was coming up, and it, it, it's terrible. I mean, you can, you can see right into your yards. Um, but in the quote, it seemed like, um, maybe there'd be some room to maybe go Neil's way and get some taller trees, because I found in the quote, there was, you know, this contingency fund and then it added, you know, another fund on this and ten percent on that. And, and honestly, I planted a green giant in my backyard a year or so ago, a hundred dollars. Okay, now we did pick it up and plant it ourselves, but the, these were five hundred dollars apiece. Maybe we can get a more competitive quote and cut out some of the, you know, ten percent contingency and this and that and all these extra charges. When you got down to what were we really getting, it, it really built up the quote because there was so much. So maybe someone who knows something, we could get us a better quote and we could take our money further.
Well, as I spoke earlier, another time, another place, that's now. Hubble, Roth and Clark is charging us ten thousand dollars for four hours of CAD work to redo that landscape plan. No thought, no nothing, ten grand. They missed the mo, they missed the mulch by half, in the aspect, they doubled the amount of mulch, and they're taking ten percent. Why are we paying them that kind of money when we can be investing it in the landscape? It's ridiculous. When I saw that, I wasn't sure how I was going to speak to this group. I'm so glad I get to speak to it now, because in the aspect, eight foot on center is not enough. Twelve, there's twelve arborvitae's per hundred feet. That's not enough. We need to, I would appreciate an approval of eighty thousand dollars. We'll work with Hubble, Roth and Clark and work with the, uh, uh, township staff, and we'll make a bang for your buck, and I'll get you competitive bids in the aspect. Not only you guys bid it, I'll send it out to fifteen of my friends, and we'll make sure we get a good number. But this, this is not acceptable in the aspect of what I saw.
Okay, thank you.
I, I do have a question for the gentleman as well. Um, what would you like to see with regards to planting? Your, what's your opinion?
I gave, uh, the township a laundry list of plants. Uh, one of the comments that I got back was, well, all of this stuff has got to be salt tolerant. Well, I gave, everything I gave to them was salt tolerant. There should be deciduous and evergreen plants throughout that whole, uh, area. It should be a mixture. In the aspect, in hix u's at four foot, they'll take forever to grow and they're worthless. In the aspect of, we don't use them in a landscape planting for a hedge. You know, there's just so many more plants we can use. You can use privet hedge, you can use viburnum, you can use forsythia. You know, there's just lots of plants. And unfortunately, I wanted trees, it won't work with the, uh, M dot right-of-way. In the aspect, there's not enough room to, to the trees.
Or elevation.
The elevation is irrelevant, because as long as the trees stay below twenty feet, we're fine, but we can't do that. You know, in the aspect of the way the, uh, M dot right-of-way works and the Addison right-of-way works, because they're supposed to be four foot off the, uh, the tree lines. And I sent that same piece of information to the township when I sent my recommendations, so.
Okay, thank you. Cory, anything else you'd like to add?
No, but our, our intent, Val, was to, uh, to advertise and bid, uh, this work. Um, we, uh, we did, um, get favorable pricing from a contractor last year. Uh, even our second bidder on this project was, uh, four hundred dollars less than the, the original bidder, uh, for the work, for those pay items, right? So, uh, we think we can get favorable, um, unit prices, uh, for this work. And if we have enough budgeted, um, we think seventy-seven thousand is a good start. Uh, we can also apply for grants, uh, next year through a couple different resources, and then, uh, what we don't fill in this spring, we could come back next year and, and fill in the rest.
Thank you. Yeah, it, it, it just, what happened, the clearing, it's not acceptable, and I'm glad that we're making a plan to help them.
Sir, can we use some of the funds from the Safety Path Maintenance Fund?
Seems like it'd be related. Because it was the safety path. I don't know if that's already informally earmarked as something else, but I, but I think you can make an argument that that's Safety Path Maintenance.
Thank you.
What's this, you mean the separate from the Safety Path Fund balance?
No, well, the Safety Path, there's a, there's a safe, separate part for just, uh, maintenance of the Safety Path that we set aside.
That we use to fix, you know, broken, broken squares and broken split rails.
I think we can use Safety Path dollars for this, but I'm not sure which part of it, so why don't we do a little homework?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, if we could look at different ways we can find the funds, because again, uh, I don't think the, the height as presented is, is sufficient to get started on this.
I, I agree with you, Neil. I don't think the height is sufficient, and, um, do you wanna make a motion or amendment to this on that, or?
I will, be happy to. Um, like to make a motion that we.
Can I ask one last, one more question?
Sure. Um, sorry.
Just, I want some clarity around what actually happened. I mean, I understand that some trees were marked by us, I think, for HRC that would be removed, but then more trees were taken. Is that a rogue contractor that, or was that actually DTE?
It was a double hit.
Yeah, so let me, I'm gonna try to go back.
And the M dot fence looks completely, you know, insufficient. We should talk to them.
There's a photo here.
Do you think they're gonna replace that fence?
So, I, I think if you can see this photo here, um, you see that on the right, there's the black, um, it's called silt fence.
Yep.
And that's installed, and that's basically the grading limits, um, for, to install the safety path along this, um, within the M dot right-of-way. Uh, in order to establish a, an elevation that's maintainable, you have to, we have to grade this right-of-way in a way such that you've got adequate slope coming off the back of curb, construction of the safety path, and then behind the safety path, between the safety path and the wall, or in the, in the chain link fence. The, uh, uh, in order to do that, uh, a lot of this shrubbery along this fence line had to be thinned out. Um, when I say thinned out, there was never an intention of removing trees or shrubbery on the, uh, would be the, the homeowner's side of that, of that fence line. So as we come through here, um, let's just see if we get to another photo here of before and after. See, a lot of this, a lot of this greenery and shrubbery that's on the fence line, that was cleared out, and that's all that was done as part of our project. Um, however, when, uh, DTE came through, they did, I don't know if we've got, they did more of the topping of the trees basically here, you can see here, a lot of the, um, even down here, to avoid their power lines, okay? So it, it's, it was sort of a double whammy that occurred as a part of the, a, a part of the work. And you can see how this, if I had a laser pointer, I don't wanna get away from the microphone, but you can see on the right side of the safety path and how that grade was resloped to come to the, which we, what we call the face of walk. And then on the backside of it is the back of walk, and then the slope that goes from the back of walk down to the fence line, so it's uniform. That's why we had to do that, that fence line clearing, so, um, it, it was a necessity for the project to do that fence line clearing. Um, but I don't disagree with the, the frustrations of the homeowners either, uh, and then what's, what the results of that was. Now, I stand by the Safety Path, and I think it's beautiful, and I think it's gonna be used by many, I think it serves a great purpose. Uh, and I'll argue that all day long. Um, but there are ways that we can help alleviate some of this, uh, the hardships that are, the residents are experiencing.
Yeah, thank you for this. Also, that fence, who owns that fence?
That's a, that's M dot.
It is M dot?
Yes.
So can we go to M dot and ask them to upgrade that fence? Is that possible, to make more of a privacy fence there than a chain link fence?
I, I don't, I, we can, Mike, but I don't, they're gonna do that. That's, that's, that's a standard, that's a standard.
What is that, about twelve hundred feet of fencing along that whole way, do you think, estimate?
That's quite a.
Um, yeah.
Nine hundred.
Yeah, plus or minus.
So the other thing that was brought up was the, I didn't see anything, that was the pathway, uh, in the, the light of the pathway. And my understanding is those lights are, there's very specific, though tall, very specifically aimed down, not be spreading out beyond the, the Safety Path.
Yeah, those are shielded lights, they're the park, uh, park-style lights, uh, that the board, uh, approved, that, that reflects straight down and does not cascade outwardly. So there'd be, uh, uh, just lighting going straight down onto the path itself.
Are there hours of operation for the lighting?
Dusk to dawn.
Dusk to dawn, so at night they're off?
No, they're on.
No, they're on dusk to dawn all night.
But those were specific, I remember we voted on them, because we were very mixed for the downward and, um, because there was also the, the bollard lighting.
Yeah.
Which were, which were low, but they would spread the light more out. So these were much more, um, downward and direct, which is why, why I think the majority went that way.
So when they go down, like, can you, are they down about like three feet that they light, so the one?
They, no, the, the, um, the lights that are installed now are the park-style lights that have that shield, like, like you'd see in a, in a park, that, that, um, cascade the light straight down onto the Safety Path.
Not like you'd see in a parking lot?
Not a parking lot, no, in a park.
Which was the intent.
On a walking path in a park, yes.
Can we change the time? I mean, does it have to be dusk to dawn? Can it be, you know, dusk to ten, or?
Yeah, yeah.
Technologically feasible, I mean, it's not like some.
Yeah, it, it would take some, uh, discussions with DT, so, um, we can, we can do whatever, whatever the board decides.
Well, I think once they go on, let's test them out and see what the responses from the community.
I think so.
Yeah, and I think, Neil, were you gonna make a motion?
Yeah, I was gonna make a motion that, uh, we approve, uh, what is presented, subject to, uh, the, uh, trees that are planted be a minimum of twelve feet, and that we look for additional. And that we look for additional funding opportunities, whether through the Safety Path Funds, Safety Path Maintenance Funds or Grants.
I'd like to add, and that we look for more competitive pricing.
Well, that's-
Well, that's, I mean, that's through the bidding-
That was just a rough proposal, that's not the proposal we're going with then, is what you're telling me.
Well, that's, it was an estimate, but based on the, it, it, the engineer's estimate for those species of trees. So if, if we're proposing to go with a taller, a, a tree out, out of the gate, we'll have to revise that.
Okay.
Excuse me.
And continue to work with the community on, on this, as they have some input on it as well.
Yeah, as one, as one resident mentioned, we are meeting with, with them on staff and our consultants are meeting with them on Wednesday.
Okay, so we have a motion?
What, what's the dollar in there?
Seventy seven thousand.
Seventy seven thousand? Out of the Woodland Tree Fund?
Yes.
The Woodland Tree Fund?
Right.
Okay.
Support.
Support, all in favor, Mark?
I have one question. Is that for only the one particular variety of tree? Or can we add the three that the gentleman had mentioned earlier?
No, just for that variety and not, not the other one, just for that variety tree.
There was multiple trees in the, in the proposal. It wasn't just one, one species, if that's what you're saying, it was all in the packet.
Okay.
If I, if I may-
I think we're just approving the funding and some site suggestions. You guys will figure out the details.
That's exactly what I was gonna say.
You worked it out.
I think we have to leave this administrative-
And whatever, whatever we come with, what, what we intend to do with the board's blessing, we will discuss with the, with the homeowners there and come up with a plan. And we will submit it for bid, advertise it for bid. And then come back to the board for bid approval with what the plan actually is.
Fair enough.
Thank you, Corey.
Support.
I support it.
Any other comments? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Corey.
Thank you for coming today.
Okay. Item number eight, consider approval to extend street sweeping contract presented by Paul Horan. Paul, hi.
Hi guys.
How are you, Paul?
Good evening, board. How are you, everybody doing today? Enjoying that nice weather we got out there?
Yeah.
Um, I'm here to seek board approval to extend, for a six-year extension of our street sweeping, street sweeping contract with G and M Enterprises. We are mandated by the Federal Clean Water Act to sweep all our curbed streets twice a year. Since two thousand and fifteen, G and M has provided us that service. And they provided, they provided us with quality work. G and M has proposed a six-year extension that includes a three percent annual increase, starting in two thousand and twenty-five this year, April of two thousand and twenty-five, and concluding in two thousand and thirty. Even with that proposed adjustment, their rates are still lower than the next lowest bidder from the original two thousand and fifteen competitive bid. With that said, it is our recommendation that the board approves the contract extension with G and M Enterprises for an additional six years, starting in April two thousand and twenty-five, with an, with an annual increase of three percent and concluding in two thousand and thirty.
Thanks, Paul. So Paul, any questions from the board? Paul, this is a six-year contract?
Correct.
Is that what we normally do with street sweeping, is six years?
Correct, yeah, so this would be the, this would be the third extension. The first year, the first contract started, I believe, it was a three-year contract. They did a, they did a extension of one year. And then in two thousand and nineteen, they did a, they did a six-year extension. This would be the, the second, well, the, the, the third extension, but the, the fourth extension, but the second six-year extension.
Okay, great, okay. Any questions for Paul? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second?
Support.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, great, good luck, good luck sweeping. Number nine, introduction to amend the site plan development agreement for unit one of Turtle Lake Farms, twenty-six thirty Turtle Lake. Andrea, welcome.
Good evening, thank you. So what we have before you, I want to make a rather brief introduction to the proposal. The request from the board this evening is to consider setting a public hearing for a proposed amendment to the development agreement, as well as the master deed for a, for a lot reconfiguration in Turtle Lake. The address, the address is twenty-six thirty Turtle Lake Drive, known as unit one. Provided here on your screen, you can see that, oh, I guess you can't see that on the screen. Highlighted here on your screen is the parcel that we're referring to. The property owner of Circle One Group Incorporated, represented by Charles Grant, Jr., is seeking approval to amend the approved site plan for Turtle Lake Development in order to provide the subject parcel highlighted on your screen. You can see the property is yellow, which indicates it's a single-family zoned residential. And here is a layout of the aerial, of the proposal. Mr. Grant provided a letter in your packet dated October tenth, two thousand and twenty-four, identifying his interest to create two separate parcels resulting in units one twenty-one and one twenty-two, with the opportunity to build a residence on unit one twenty-two. The proposal in the highlighted split is highlighted here on the survey that has been provided by the applicant. The resultant parcels, as highlighted on your screen, does meet the requirements in terms of the R-three single-family zoning classification. This preliminary, or not preliminary, but this engineered survey was reviewed by our various departments. Cause anytime we have a proposal for a lot split, need to verify that there are no extenuating issues as it relates to our fire department, site circulation, as well as engineering and environmental services, police, our assessing department and treasuring department. In terms of those reviews, there are no outstanding issues. They are, the property owner is current on their taxes. And in regarding to engineering and environmental services, they have no concerns splitting unit one, subject to sufficiently addressing the comments, which is provided in the January sixth, two thousand and twenty-five memorandum regarding water and sewer, utility easements, storm drainage and grading, wetlands and natural feature setback. I want to note that the proposed parcels do meet the minimum lot size and actually do come in at, the resultant parcels for the proposed unit one twenty-one comes in with a land area of one point six one acres, as well as proposed unit one twenty-two, resulting in two point four three acres, which are slightly larger than other parcels within the development. And they also have provided a buildable envelope, indicating that they are able to construct a structure that does comply with our required setbacks within the R-three single-family residential district. The building envelopes, as shown and highlighted on the survey, result in a twenty thousand sixty-seven square foot buildable envelope, as well as a sixteen thousand eight hundred and seven square foot buildable envelope. Again, just a reminder, the envelope is the area in which they, the structure can be located as to comply with all the required setbacks. With that, I do want to reiterate that the amendment included as part of this proposal identifies that the developer will submit and, for a review and approval by HRC, a updated storm water management plan, in addition to a tenth amendment to the development agreement for Turtle Lake. So I just wanted to reiterate that there was a previous public hearing and approval by this board addressing other units within Turtle Lake. And the, the condition on that approval resulted in the desire of the board to have the development submit, submit an updated storm water management plan. So that is definitely something that would be required to be reviewed and approved prior to the issuance of any building permits. But as a, for your consideration this evening, we are asking the board, under what conditions you would be able to set a public hearing to meet our obligation for this requested lot split. And we are looking at an April fourth, or April fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-five public hearing to consideration the amended site plan and the associated amendments to the development agreement for Turtle Lake and the master deed amendment. And then there's also some photos that have been provided by the applicant showing the current property, the configured, the current layout of the property. And then also you can see provided in your packet, there is a September fourth, two thousand and twenty-four letter from Victor International, who is the, essentially the HOA for this development and oversees all the architectural control. And you can see that within there, they have provided a, a list of items that will need to be addressed by the applicant at the time of development and construction for, or the creation of the development for this, these parcels. And with that, I'm certainly here to answer any questions. I do know that we have a representative here from Victor International. And I'm here to answer any questions.
Okay, would you like to make any comments while you're here?
No.
Any questions or comments from the board? Okay, if not, we do a motion to approve for the, hold the public hearing on April the fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-five.
To set a public hearing, correct.
So moved.
Support.
Support, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you Andrea.
Thank you very much.
Okay, item number ten, consider approval of the Uniform Video Services Local Franchise Agreement Renewal with Comcast. Our Director of Cable Community Relations, Carrie Lazott, welcome Carrie.
Thank you, good evening. We only get to do this every ten years. So I'm asking you to consider renewing the franchise agreement with Comcast. The current Comcast agreement is set to expire on three twenty-two of this month and the renewal is for ten years. The franchise fee percentage has been determined by the state and can be up to five percent of gross revenue. The peg fees are also included in this renewal and that fee is established at two percent of gross revenue. These are the maximum percentages allowed by the state. The document to be signed, the contract that was included in your packet, is a state prescribed form. My recommendation is that the board should approve the franchise renewal at five percent gross revenue. Thank you.
All right, any questions?
I just have one, what were we charging before?
The same.
So it's just a true renewal as is?
It is, yes.
Perfect.
And we don't get to have really any say in it, the state tells us what to do.
And I know you really would like to, so.
I, I was like, let's do ten, but no, no, they said, you know, we're not allowed to do that. We could go lower than five percent, but I put it in five percent.
Perfect.
Okay.
Does that include the two percent peg fee as well?
Uh, the five and the two are in the contract, yes.
Okay, entertain a motion.
So moved.
Support.
Support, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same, okay. Let's go back to item number three, our lobbyist firm, we figure they're in the lobby next door probably. We do have another meeting set up with them next Monday and I'm thinking they might have been confused that I know they're planning on being with us on the seventeenth, St. Patty's Day. So I'll just cover the objective here. We're looking at hiring public affairs associates out of Lansing, Michigan to support our efforts to get some new legislation passed that would help us. And one is with peg fees, hookup fees, but also in some other areas as trying to chase down money from the state for projects like Fire Station number three. Or getting help if we want to build a new public safety department. You need this assistance, they're nonpartisan. They work with not just the legislators, both in the House, the Senate, but also with the governor's office and her staff. But more importantly, they work with each different state department, from the directors on down. Cause that's where a lot of decisions are made. One of the issues that we're facing right now is with our inland waterways and who controls that. And right now, we're, we're struggling with that. We could use help at the state department level in trying to correct what we see as, as actions taken by the DNR that prevent us from enforcing our own waterways. That would be one. Another area that we could work on is with these peg fees. And we're looking at putting in more of the fiber optics for streaming services. And there's nothing set aside there for right of way access that we need to take a look at. There's, there's so many other things they can help us with. And they gave us an estimate, well, not an estimate, but they gave us a one-year agreement that would be, cost us thirty-five thousand dollars. It's cancelable within thirty days at any time, if we don't feel we're getting our money's worth. It's a one-year agreement and I say we hire them and give it a shot and see what we can get and get a return on our investment and get some real strong representative, represents, representation to help our, our House members and our state senate members to bring us back some wins. So any questions I can help answer?
No, I was just gonna say, I think it's a great use of money. You need to spend some money to make some money. And I spoke to the supervisor of Orient Township, Chris Barnett, who's been there for a long time. And they've been using lobbyists for about ten years or more. And I recall years ago, he was telling me that they use a lobbyist. And how significant of a payback that they've been able to get on different projects, whether it's public safety, whether it was some of the municipal buildings, grants for different projects. So I think it's a great use of money and it's, I'm very much in favor of it.
Yes, Chris? I'd like to echo the same thing. When you brought this to our attention, I thought this was a great idea. Again, we have some big projects coming on the line, be able to kind of get more of a voice up there. And then again, there's an escape clause in the contract for us. So if we're not seeing we're getting value out of it, it's a thirty-day escape clause. So there's plenty of, I only see upside here. So thank you for bringing this to our attention. I'm really excited to hopefully get the ball rolling on this.
Yeah, great.
Did we get a offer from any other groups to do this same work?
No, I, Mark, I didn't go to, I didn't go to other groups. And I thought actually the price was going to be usually the minimum is five thousand dollars a month, up to ten thousand dollar a month of who you, who you go to. But being in Lansing, I'm familiar with their work and some of the relationships they have throughout the state departments. But also, they, they also represent the Oakland County Commissioner's Office. And I thought that was a nice relationship for us to, to work with.
Yeah, thank you for your homework on that, Mike, appreciate it.
But you're right, Mark, there's, there's, you know, probably ten very good lobbyist firms in Lansing. And there, and there's maybe fifty plus. And you, I just went with one that I'm familiar with, that's, I've seen, I've watched over the years. And I just, and, and with the price that they gave us, I was taken back by, by it. I didn't expect thirty-five thousand dollars, I was expecting a minimum of sixty thousand dollars for the year. So I felt it was, it's a good investment. And you're right, we could keep, we could keep looking and we could bid it out. But I know their relationships and that's, that's what I was kind of keeping an eye on.
Can you explain a little bit more about the value add with the work that they're doing with Oakland County?
Yeah, so they represent the Oakland County Commission, that'd be Dave Woodward and all the commissioners in, in Lansing. And I know that they were working on some of the issues that were going on in Lansing with regard to the sick time leave, I believe, as well as paid, the paid sick time, the time off, and some other areas that we may not agree with.
Okay. So it's, I'm more concerned about if there's a conflict of interest and how would they represent both sides between us and Oakland County?
They have a firm with about, I think about six, six or eight direct lobbyists. So each of their lobbyists concentrate in a certain area and that's their focus. So that's kind of keeps things separated. I could tell you, I know some of the relationships that they have in and around Lansing. And those are the people we want to, we want to get to. And I, I always think no matter what lobbyist we pick, we'll, we'll probably run into some conflicts. But there's always workarounds because of the size of their staff, for the most part.
Okay, thank you for the explanation, appreciate it.
Sure, sure. If not, any other questions? I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion that we approve as presented.
Support?
Support.
Support, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, great, thank you. And I think that is our, a move for adjournment?
A move we adjourn.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned, thank you.